Good evening, I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the Newport News School Board for Tuesday, September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. On behalf of the members of the School Board and Dr. Mitchell, I welcome each of you present this evening and those who are watching on TV and online. A poem is present to transact the business of the school division. We will begin tonight's meeting with the invocation and pledge to the flag. Here to do the honors is Kyla Leggett, our School Board Student Representative. That's Kyla Leggett, I'm sorry, Kyla. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the School Board, Superintendent Dr. Mitchell, auditorium guests, and our viewing audience. My name is Kyla Leggett. I'm a senior at Mitchell High School and I'm serving as a student representative to the School Board. As we begin a new school year, I would like to share a poem with you called "The Bridge Builder," written by Maya Anthony. They stand at life's riverwide, building bridges side by side. For the ones who come after to tread over challenges where once they let. With every stone and every beam, they craft a path, they weave a dream. Not for themselves, but those to come, a legacy that won't come undone. The bridge stands firm against the tide, a testament to those who've tried. To lead with heart with foresight clear, for a brighter boundless frontier. Thank you. Now, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyla. And at this time, I would like to recognize Councilman Rob Coleman, who's in the audience tonight. Thank you so very much for coming. Did you want to say something tonight?
Sure. (laughter) Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Superintendent, uh, I mean Council members, School Board members, and our fellow citizens here, thank you so much for this opportunity. I just wanted to come by today and just pop in and just show my support. Uh, I've always been very supportive of the school system and always been so appreciative of the incredible job that each and every one of you do to care for our students and to get them ready for that next step in their lives. And I know we're, we have a very close relationship between the Council and the School Board, and we want to continue with that relationship moving forward. And I just wanted to also give, uh, just a little public service announcement that we will be having a Public Safety Committee meeting tomorrow. I am the Chair of the Public Safety Committee. Mr. Mark Stewart is on our committee. He represents the school system. He's done a phenomenal job. He's been an integral part of our committee, but, uh, we'll be talking about tomorrow, we'll be talking about our new vape shop ordinance that we're gonna be putting forward on the twenty-third. That's really focused on limiting the number of vape shops we have in the city and also probably, well, not probably, we'll be looking at how do we keep those vape products out of our children's hands. So, also, we'll be, uh, talking about truancy. Um, and, you know, we all know there's a straight line between truancy and crime rates in the city, and we're gonna be talking about how we can partner with you guys to help get that message out, uh, just talking about how important it is to get our children into school and get them in the classrooms and, like I said, getting them ready for that next big step in their lives. So, a lot of great things are happening. Ms. Alger reached out to me today about the Public Safety Committee meeting. Hope that you guys can join us. All are welcome. Citizens are welcome to join us as well as tomorrow at one o'clock in City Hall. Uh, we'll be talking about some great things and looking forward to hearing about some great ideas from you and the rest of our citizens. But, thank you again for this opportunity and thank you for everything you do for the City of Newport News and our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. As advertised, citizens may submit comments via email up to thirty minutes prior to our meeting time to be included in the official meeting record. For those of you joining us in person, the Board considers this an opportunity to listen to your comments. Please understand, we will consider your concerns. We ask that you comply with our three-minute time limit. As you begin your comments, a green light will come on. A yellow light signals that you have thirty seconds remaining, and a red light and beep indicates your time is up. As your name is called, please come forward. Mr. Tom Ammon, and he will be followed by Reverend Natalie Chamberlain.
Good evenings, uh, everybody. It's a privilege to be here with you all and to share some thoughts. Uh, I want to take a moment to reflect on all that has happened this past week. As a man of faith and a conservative leader, I was sickened by the assassination of Charlie Kirk. I believe it was simply put, a demonic attack on Charlie Kirk, free speech, the church, and America. The sadness I feel for his family is heavy. Knowing that Charlie was a believer in Jesus makes it sting a little less, because he is now and has been embraced by his Lord and Savior, Jesus, and he has heard these wonderful words, "Well done, good and faithful servant." Those of us left here must pick up and continue sharing the message. God loves all people, and through His Son, Jesus, you can have a personal relationship with God. More speech and civil debate, not less, is better. Anyone who took joy in Charlie's death has no place teaching or leading our children. For that matter, anyone who took to social media to share their joy over Charlie's assassination should not be surprised if they are fired from their jobs and shunned by society. This type of abhorrent behavior, dancing on the grave of a person or physically hurting or killing someone because you disagree with their political beliefs, must stop. And unfortunately, unless there are public repercussions for such behavior, it will not stop. Those people should feel the repercussions of their actions, period. America is the shining city on a hill and is a great force for good in this world. Never let anyone tell you differently. Now is the time to stand up and be counted. We are all Charlie Kirk now. We must speak truth with gentleness and love. Do not be silent because of what happened to Charlie. If we do, evil wins. Let us be men and women of honor and carry the torch of truth forward into this dark world. God bless Charlie's family and God bless America. Thank you.
Reverend Chamberlain will be followed by Mr. Jim Batterson.
Good evening. I'm Reverend Natalie Chamberlain. My pronouns are she and her. As you all know, I am part of a coalition of citizens who've been attending these meetings for the past couple of years. We support equality and the respectful treatment of all children, including trans and other LGBTQIA+ youth. I'm well aware that you have no intention of changing policy JBP, but I'm not here for you, as I said last month. I am here for all the trans students and staff and those who love them. I'm not by nature a cynical person. My time before this body is going a long way toward changing that. I know you will not use your power to protect trans and other queer students, but there are two things that you need to know whether you like them or not. The first is that neutrality in the face of oppression is siding with the oppressor. In this case, you're making your students less safe by pretending that changing policy JBP doesn't matter. And second, I'd like to share some statistics that come from the Trevor Project. You have a written copy of these, so I'm only gonna lift up a couple of them. First, suicide is the second-leading cause of death among young people aged ten to twenty-four. One out of six students nationwide grades nine through twelve seriously considered suicide in the past year. And each episode of LGBT victimization, such as physical or verbal harassment or abuse, increases the likelihood of self-harming behavior by two and a half times on average. You can't pretend that your neutrality doesn't matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jim Batterson will be followed by Ms. Jackie Batterson.
All right. Um, I'm, I'll go ahead and figure they can get them around. Okay. I'm Jim Batterson, a resident of Newport News. My way of credentials, three generations. My mother, I, three daughters graduated from Newport News Public Schools. I taught math and physics at Menchville High School, have served on this board, and served a senior advisor to the Commonwealth's for STEM initiatives during Governor Kane's administration. The statistical basis for my comments tonight is found in the latest CDC YRBS survey of more than twenty thousand US high school students, which shows there to be three-point-three percent self-identifying trans and another two-point-two percent gender-questioning children in grades nine through twelve, nationally translating to some four-hundred-and-thirty-five trans or questioning children in our Newport News high schools. These data support Reverend Natalie Chamberlain's concerns in her testimony last month regarding mental health issues affecting these children, with some three-hundred children across Newport News high schools affected. Reverend Chamberlain also testified regarding the increased incidence of suicide-related thoughts and actions among our trans and gender-questioning children, which was documented at fully four times the rate of the already too-high cisgender high school population, or one-hundred-and-seventy-one Newport News high school children laying out a suicide plan and thirty-three carrying it out to the point of requiring medical attention. Reverend Michael Burnett made some modest suggestions for changes in procedure JBP to bring it closer to supporting policy JB, less ideological and perhaps lowering the pathologies among our trans and questioning children. He questioned, he suggested simply calling children by the name and pronoun they prefer. The governor's restrictive Anglofile guidance has no place in, and demonstrates a clear lack of understanding of our diverse community. Call children only by commonly associated nicknames such as Peg, Jen, Bob, from Margaret, Jennifer, and Robert, indeed. By this authoritarian and arbitrary and capricious government overstep, Tiger Woods would have carried the handle Eldrick with his non-standard nickname Tiger, which was chosen to honor a South Vietnamese Colonel who was a great friend of his father, not permitted in Virginia. However, I've been most disappointed over more than a year now. To the best of my knowledge, not a single board member has spoken up in defense of these fragile children. You have an opportunity at every meeting under the final agenda item matters by the School Board. You act as if you were impotent to anything, to do anything about a procedure. The legislative history of having procedures presented to the Board along with the policies the Board approves is so that the Board can be assured the procedure that staff implements comports with the approved Board policy. And if it does not, as with JBP, it requires the Superintendent to rework it and continue to bring it back to the Board until it does. By your own policies, any board member can request the Chair add an agenda item. Will your silence in these situations continue even if the governor were to follow Florida's frightening example and eliminate vaccination requirements for children entering our schools, putting not only those unvaccinated, but those most vulnerable classmates and immunocompromised teachers, parents, and grandparents in the community in deadly peril? This Board needs to understand its duty to lead and stand up and do it for our children and the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jackie Batterson will be followed by Mr. Christopher Johnson.
Tonight, I wear a red in solidarity with the Newport News school employees and their quest for collective bargaining. Good evening, members of the School Board. September is Suicide Prevention Month, during which September tenth was designated Suicide Prevention Awareness Day. On that day, we committed to building a world where every young person feels safe and supported and never alone. This includes our LGBTQ plus young people, including our transgender children, many of whom attend schools in this school district and do not fall under the definition of transgender students in your policy JB. This policy, which you have in place, states that you respect the rights and dignity of all students. Your procedure JBP does not do that. You refuse to acknowledge the trans children's chosen names and preferred pronouns. These trans children's anxiety and fear have increased exponentially with the transphobic executive orders put in place by the federal and state governments. These policies signal to these children and their families a chilling and uncertain future. Our transgender children report that they receive a high level of support from some of their peers, but only seventeen percent feel highly supported at home. It is vital for schools to actively work toward creating a welcome environment for these children. Please review and change your procedure JBP. I will end with two quotes. The first is from George DeCai. "We must learn from the past not to repeat it. The erosion of rights and the targeting of communities based on fear and prejudice must be challenged at every turn." And from Dietrich Bonhoeffer, "Silence in the face of evil is itself evil. We will not be held guiltless. Not to speak is to speak. Not to act is in itself an act." Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Christopher Johnson will be followed by Carolyn Pope Fralind. Thank you.
Good evening. Um, I'm Christopher Johnson, husband to Samantha Johnson. I work at the USPS. I'm a proud union member and vice president of my local branch, six oh nine, at Newport News. I'm here to encourage the School Board to bring up the topic of collective bargaining for a vote. Forming a union can have positive effects for the school district. It can reduce turnover, help with conflict resolution with staff, uh, creates an environment of cooperation and shared goals. I urge you to bring forward the vote for collective bargaining and let the process of good faith bargaining and mutual respect begin. There's a lot of hard topics going on right now, and you guys have a very hard job. I urge you to consider that the union could help. They'd be willing to participate in having these tough conversations. It's nice to have people on both sides working together for one shared goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Pope will be followed by Gabriel Marquez.
Good evening, Dr. Mitchell, Dr. Best, and the rest of the School Board. We thank you for this opportunity to speak before you this evening. This weekend, I listened to a podcast on Stacey Abrams on broadcast, and it was entitled "Assembly Required." The particular topic talked about dismantling public education. We know right now that there is an attack on our public education system. And it was said during the broadcast that public, the public good is best served by a public education. And right now, the public education system is in the fight for its life, and we must be unified in this fight. It is not the union against the Board, but this is a fight that we have to fight together. Our President, um, Ms. Pringle, has been fighting. She is using lawyers to fight on the behalf. We know that at the beginning of our school year, seven billion dollars was being held up to public schools. But because of the fight that went on through the unions, that money was released. It was unpaused. And right now, there is a fight going on in Congress, and they're looking to cut fifteen percent of the educational budget, and we cannot let this happen. And I just encourage you to just look and to work with the union, because we're not at each other, we're not at odds with each other, but we all want the best for our young people, and we know that. She left, um, this, at our union's annual event, she charged the membership with seven points. She said, "Every day, this is what I want you to do." One of these points, if not all of them, one, educate. Two, communicate. Three, organize. Four, mobilize. Five, litigate. Six, legislate. And seven, elect. It's so important. As a teacher at Woodside High School, I'm about to retire, but my battle doesn't stop. My battle does not stop. And I am here to fight for the children, but I want to fight on a collective front with our School Board, because Washington is after our children. We must educate them, if nothing else, and we have to fight for the funding to do it. I know you struggled with your budget this year, because you didn't know where the funds were coming from, but that's what we're here for collectively. Thank you.
Thank you. Gabriel Marquez, followed by Dr. James Graves.
He had to leave.
Oh, he left? All right. Dr. Graves.
(laughter) Does everyone know it's raining outside, so y'all excuse my rain jacket? You know, I would've been in a suit or something, but, good evening, everyone. Dare say, my statement is coming around. As you all know, August sixteenth, I presented to you all the resolution for collective bargaining. Let me thank you for accepting the resolution, not voting on it, I'm saying accepting, I ain't saying vote. But I wanted to let you know that it is a good reason for us to come together, which we've always been together. But collective bargaining will bring a situation where our contracts are not just a one-pager. It has everything in it that any employee can look at for their job, from job description to sick leave to personal leave, everything will be in writing. So I urge you to be the first city in the Hampton Roads area to vote yes for collective bargaining. All the other cities up north, Arlington, Richmond, they already got it, they voted for it. But let me tell you this, there's people in our department that need this. Cafeteria workers, security officers, bus drivers, they need something to fall back on. And if the School Board, who I know very well, most of you, will vote yes on this collective bargaining, you will see a change, because people want to have a contract that they can look at and say, "This is what I can do and this is what I cannot do." It's not just about policies, it's about contract. And you will see a low turnover of teachers and staff leaving the city, because they got something to work for. And I wanted to let you know that I appreciate every one of you, and that these months are coming in the future, that we all sit down and we say, "Yes, let's get our people to the table, let's listen, and let's do what we gotta do to help our kids, to help our teachers, to help our staff, but above all, to help our community." I want to say thank you very much for listening to me, and I hope you accept my statement, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Ms. Carolyn Jones, followed by Ms. David Breckman.
Okay, good evening. My name is Carolyn Jones. My pronouns are she, hers, and first of all, I fully support trans students and staff. I just started teaching ESL in Newport News this fall, and I'm here to talk about collective bargaining, but because I deeply believe it is a matter of public importance, in part because your teacher and staff shortage is a matter of public importance. I have already seen many issues that I think are related to your teacher shortage. The main issue this month is that we are drowning in an absolutely absurd number of meetings. In September alone, I am scheduled to have eleven meetings, events, and trainings required outside of contract hours. Some have been less than an hour, but one next Thursday is an hour and a half, and back-to-school night next week is from six to eight PM on a Tuesday night. There are only twenty school days in September, so over half of my assigned workdays now have extra longer hours with no comp time, no extra prep time, and no additional compensation. I'm already losing daytime prep time multiple times a week due to legally important ESL meetings. So in addition to already staying late to call parents about discipline, call parents about meetings, meet with co-teachers, do legally important paperwork, make and print materials for classes, the list goes on, I and many other teachers are being forced to spend at least ten extra hours at school this month, in addition to everything else we already have to do year-round. Four of those meetings I mentioned are standard faculty and department meetings, you know, they come with the territory. The excuse for five of the other meetings is that I am a new hire. However, you already made me come in starting August fourth, for seven extra paid days of new teacher orientation, and I'm not actually new to teaching. I'm going into my eighth year of teaching overall, I am fully licensed, and I have completed four years of teaching ESL here in Virginia already, so I'm not new to the subject matter or the legal requirements involved. To be clear, this seems to be a problem across multiple schools in the division. I have unfortunately heard from new teachers at other schools as well. We need division-wide limits on teacher working hours and excess meetings. We know we signed up to work long hours, but it seems that this school division does not understand how much extra strain you are putting on teachers. Therefore, we need a meaningful collective bargaining agreement as soon as possible. My colleagues deserve better working conditions, and my students deserve more consistent and stable staffing across schools. And I have to have a sustainable job if I'm going to last twenty-five years until retirement. My five-year plan involves getting married and having kids. That comes first. My future husband and my future family come first. So if this isn't going to be sustainable for me, I don't know what to do. Collective bargaining is not a magic wand, but we need it. We need it as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. David Breckman, and he will be followed by Ms. Mary Voss.
Good evening, uh, Board members. I'm David Brackman, he/him. Tidewater DSA, who also would've been represented tonight by Gabriel Marquez, has started a petition to support the NNP S bus drivers who face intolerable working conditions. At present, we have collected two-hundred-three signatures from the community, and we demand that the Board support collective bargaining and work to address the issues that the bus drivers and NNP S staff face. I remain disappointed by inaction on allowing negotiation as a group that could've resolved issues exacerbating staffing shortages, and inaction on allowing measures of trans dignity by not revising procedure JBP to allow the use of preferred names without a note, and to allow confiding in counselors instead of forcing them to help people. That's all.
Thank you.
Hello, uh, Mary Voss, NNP S teacher, parent, and graduate. As always, I want to speak in support of collective bargaining, also known as contract negotiations, uh, which will give NNP S employees a seat at the table and importantly, an opportunity for us to share input on tangible ways to improve our schools and improve employee retention. A couple of examples of things that could be improved that I frequently hear from other NNP S employees, um, including at my school's Principal's Advisory Committee, are, uh, one, the need for an employee sick bank. Teachers sometimes face medical emergencies, extended illnesses, or surgeries that exhaust their sick days. A leave bank gives them a safety net, so they don't have to choose between their health and their paycheck. Um, it breaks my heart to see a coworker crying because her sick leave is almost out, even though she's surrounded by coworkers who would love to donate leave to her. Number two, the need for biweekly paychecks for NNP S employees. More frequent paychecks make budgeting easier. Um, employees can manage bills, loan payments, and household expenses more effectively, reducing reliance on overdraft fees or short-term credit. Um, this also would allow teachers to, with reduced stress, focus more on teaching and support for students. Many other districts have a sick leave bank and biweekly paychecks, and NNP S employees deserve those same opportunities, which would also help with employee retention. Um, if a previous staff survey in NNP S suggested that employees don't support a sick leave bank, I think a more accurate survey is needed, because I can tell you, as a teacher of seventeen years here, it's a very popular concept. Um, speaking as an individual, I also have to say that the- Speaking as an individual, I also have to say that the last week has been a difficult and discouraging one for me as a teacher, and I imagine for many other educators as well. Obviously, political violence should never be celebrated, that goes without saying, as a human and a professional. But what the Trump and Youngkin administrations are doing to educators is not about political violence, it's about taking advantage of a hot-button issue to overstep into the personal and professional lives of educators. Youngkin's Virginia State Superintendent announced that the VDOE would revoke teacher licenses if their social media posts, quote, violate professional standards, or quote, show inappropriate conduct. I don't trust Youngkin's VDOE or the Trump administration at all to determine what are professional standards and inappropriate conduct. They could say that posting fact-based criticisms of Trump or Youngkin or their allies violates professional standards. They could say that posting about support for a teachers' union is inappropriate conduct. Scrutinizing teachers' social media amidst a major teacher and school worker shortage is also poor policy. There already aren't enough people going into education, and this kind of harassment and big brother treatment will lead to even fewer people entering the education field, which is exactly what Trump and Youngkin want, given that their end goal is to defund public education. I'm also wondering, where was the scrutiny of teacher and staff members' social media after Minnesota State Representative Melissa Hortman and her husband were ruthlessly murdered? Why weren't flags flown at half-mast for them? Clearly, this is not about political violence, but about an opportunistic excuse to harass and intimidate public educators. Finally, please stand up for LGBTQ+ students against Youngkin's bigoted attacks on this vulnerable population. And thank you for standing up for our immigrant students against ICE entering our school buildings without a warrant. Please continue to do so. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments and thoughts this evening. We will now move on to Section Three, the Consent Agenda, which includes 3.01 minutes from the work session, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, 3.02 minutes from the closed meeting, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, 3.03 minutes from the regular meeting, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, 3.4 financial reports, including the revenue and expense reports for June and August twenty twenty-five, child nutrition report, 3.05, the personnel report, 3.06 revised school board meeting calendar, 3.07 easement, Menchville Road, 3.08 budget transfer. At this time, can we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Are there any questions, any discussion?
The question, just because it looks like this document regarding the easement harkens back to my time as the chair, and I do see my signature on the document, but I would just like some recollection of the easement, this quitclaim, that was, it looks like it was, we discussed it back in twenty twenty-two, but it looks like we're executing it now.
So you would like what?
Like some explanation of why we're voting, why it's on the consent agenda now, and what we're voting on, what the action is that we're taking.
Mr. Fairhardt will.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. If, I'm not sure what's in your packet, but there should be a diagram, and you can see that they're extending the easement to the right. It's on the same path that was approved during your tenure as chair, but their request is to extend it a little bit to the right. They're gonna continue to use the previous approved easement as well.
Okay, so this document here is, we've already quitclaimed a portion, and we're going to do an additional portion?
Correct, it should be outlined in red. If you had the same thing that I was privy to. It just slides over fifteen or twenty feet to the right. As you look down.
Okay, I'm looking for the, I'm looking for the red.
And it might not be in color.
No, that's not.
Sorry. That's much clearer when it's in color.
Yeah, it just moves up closer to the...
Right.
Looks like the B.C. Charles.
But it's that extension to the right.
And I guess just the other following question would just be, what additional land space did Dominion Energy need that we are extending this easement further?
I believe, if I'm not mistaken, they ran electricity to one of the athletic fields. And I think that that's their continued request for the utilization.
Okay, so we needed electricity run to the athletic fields, and then they are doing some work?
I think combination of us in the city.
Okay. Okay, that makes sense then, okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, discussion? Ms. Buffalo, call the role, please. Ayman?
Four.
Brown?
Four.
Harris?
Four.
Hunter?
Four.
Searl Slaw?
Four.
Alger?
Four.
Best?
Four.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. We will move to Section Five, Reports and Information. 5.01 Counseling and Mental Health Supports. Dr. Mitchell?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. This evening, we are fortunate to hear from Ms. Maddie Bell-Samra. She is our Executive Director of the Office of Special Education and Student Support. Collaborating with her two colleagues that are here with her, Ms. Lisa Evans and Linda Askew, as well as their teams, our student support teams have really strengthened our mental health and well-being services through a collaborative, multi-tiered model. So our partnerships with community organizations have expanded to provide wraparound care for students and families. So tonight, Ms. Samra will present an update on Newport News Public Schools' efforts to promote mental health and well-being. And tonight, she's gonna highlight some recent data trends, some program goals, and some future steps as we continue to invest in the success of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, and Superintendent Dr. Mitchell. Tonight, I am honored to share how Newport News Public Schools is supporting student success through our school-based mental health and school counseling programs. Joining me today are Ms. Linda Askew, Supervisor of Mental Health and Student Supports, and Ms. Lisa Evans, Director of School Counseling. Mental health is a critical factor in our students' ability to succeed academically and socially. Research shows that when students feel safe, supported, and emotionally regulated, they are able to engage in learning, build meaningful relationships, and achieve at high levels. Prioritizing mental health also strengthens our schools as learning environments. It reduces barriers such as disruptive behavior and chronic absenteeism, while fostering safer, more positive spaces for all students and staff. Importantly, schools often provide the only point of access to these supports for many of our families. By embedding mental health supports in the work of schools, we not only promote equitable access to care, but we also help students develop resilience and life skills that prepare them for success beyond graduation. Our approach to student support services is grounded in a multi-tiered system of support framework, or MTSS. At Tier One, we provide universal supports designed to reach all students. These include school-wide prevention and wellness initiatives, such as social-emotional learning, classroom guidance lessons, and programs that promote resilience, inclusion, and a positive school climate. The goal at this level is to foster a supportive environment where all students can thrive. At Tier Two, the focus shifts to students who are beginning to show signs of need and may benefit from more targeted supports. Student support professionals provide small-group interventions and short-term individualized assistance, such as skill-building groups, mentoring, academic or attendance support, and regular check-ins. At this level, staff also conduct screenings like suicide risk assessments and participate in threat assessments, helping us identify and address concerns early before they escalate. At Tier Three, we offer the most intensive individualized services for students with significant or ongoing needs. This includes therapeutic counseling, crisis response, and highly personalized support plans. Staff may coordinate intensive case management, work closely with families, and connect students with community-based mental health providers. Our school psychologists and school social workers also play a critical role here, conducting specialized evaluation to support special education eligibility decisions, as well as functional behavior assessments and individualized behavior intervention plans. This tiered framework ensures that every student receives the right level of support at the right time, whether through proactive wellness efforts, targeted interventions, or intensive individualized care. Our mental health program has a clear objective: to provide timely, accessible, and comprehensive support that allows students to thrive. Our goals are to improve student well-being and mental health outcomes, to boost academic performance, and to strengthen partnerships with families and community providers. We know that when students feel supported, they can focus on learning, and when families are engaged, students succeed. Our school-based mental health program is unique among student support services provided in Virginia school divisions. NNPS is proud to boast a dedicated mental health workforce, staffed by highly qualified professionals. In addition to our professional school counselors, school psychologists, and school social workers, NNPS employs mental health therapists and student support specialists who are all specifically licensed or credentialed as providers of mental health services in the state of Virginia. By combining evidence-based practices, student-centered individualized supports, and staff expertise, NNPS has built a comprehensive and responsive school-based mental health program. Collaboration among our student support service professionals is the foundation of effectively supporting the mental health and well-being of our students. Professional school counselors, student support specialists, and mental health therapists each contribute in a distinct, yet complementary way. School counselors promote academic achievement, career readiness, and social-emotional development for all of our students. Their primary role is prevention and early intervention, designing and delivering lessons, small groups, and school-wide programs that equip students with the skills and mindsets they need to thrive in school and beyond. Student support specialists respond as individual needs arise. They provide check-ins and mentoring, address crises, and serve as vital connectors to families by linking them to school and community-based supports. Their focus ensures that students experiencing barriers to learning remain engaged and supported. Mental health therapists bring clinical expertise to students who require more intensive intervention. Through therapeutic counseling, evidence-based treatment, and collaboration with families, they address significant mental health challenges that impact a student's daily functioning and well-being. This collaborative model strengthens outcomes, maximizes resources, and ensures that students receive the right level of care. Now that we've outlined the framework for how supports are delivered, I'd like to share some data that highlights the impact of our mental health and school counseling services. Over the past three years, we've seen steady and significant growth in both student support services and mental health therapy referrals. Student support services showed their sharpest rise. Services increased from about eighty-seven hundred in the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year to more than sixteen thousand this past year, nearly doubling since the program's inception. Mental health therapy referrals also continue to climb, growing from eight hundred and eighty-nine referrals in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year to nine hundred and twenty-one in twenty-three, twenty-four, to over twelve hundred in twenty-four, twenty-five, a thirty-six percent increase in just three years. This trend tells us two important things. First, that the demand for mental health services continues to rise. And second, that families and schools not only know about these services, but also trust them as a reliable and accessible source for help for our students. This slide highlights student support services data from the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Our professional school counselors remain a consistent daily presence in every school. Last year, they delivered over fifty-five hundred classroom lessons aligned to academic, career, and social-emotional learning, facilitated more than thirty-one hundred small-group sessions to build coping, organization, and conflict resolution skills, and conducted nearly forty-eight thousand individual sessions, providing students with personalized support to problem-solve, set goals, and stay on track. Our student support specialists provided over sixteen thousand supports, from crisis response to student check-ins to engaging with families. Their work ensures students facing barriers to learning receive timely, practical help that keeps them connected to school. Our mental health therapists received more than twelve hundred referrals for school-based therapy. Of these, ninety-seven percent of students were served directly through our program, while the remaining three percent were connected to community providers, ensuring continuous access to care for every student in need. Now, these numbers reflect more than services delivered. They represent students gaining essential life skills, building resilience, and staying connected to school, foundations that are critical not only to their well-being, but also to their academic success and future readiness. The numbers we just reviewed highlight the ongoing, everyday supports our teams provide to help students thrive. But there are also moments when our schools face unexpected challenges that go beyond the day-to-day services. In times of crisis, such as the loss of a student or staff member or other significant events, our mental health team is deployed to provide immediate, onsite support. This includes grief groups, counseling, and follow-up care for students and staff. In the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year alone, the team responded to ten significant crisis events. This critical service helps ensure our schools remain not only places of learning, but also communities of safety, healing, and support when they are needed most. Our school-based mental health and counseling programs are strengthened by the trusted partnerships we have built with community providers. These partnerships allow us to extend support beyond the walls of our schools and ensure that students and families receive the full range of services they may need. Through our partnership with the Hampton Newport News Community Services Board, students can be seamlessly referred for comprehensive outpatient and crisis services. Similarly, our collaboration with the National Counseling Group brings therapeutic day treatment services into our schools for eligible students. We are also proud to support our military-connected students through the Military Family Life Counseling Program, which addresses the unique needs of children and youth in several schools with high concentrations of military families. The New Horizons Family Counseling Center at the College of William &amp; Mary provides another essential layer of support by offering free, short-term counseling services to families. Finally, our partnership with William &amp; Mary School of Education not only provides professional learning opportunities for our staff, it also strengthens the school psychologist pipeline by supporting graduate students through practicum and internship placements in NNPS schools. Together, these partnerships create a comprehensive network of care that amplifies the impact of our in-house programs and ensures that students and families have access to timely, effective, and specialized support. As we look ahead, our focus is on expanding the impact of this program in three key ways. First, we plan to expand professional learning. Professional school counselors, mental health therapists, and student support specialists will expand training offerings that equip teachers and administrators with the skills they need to recognize early signs of mental health concerns and respond effectively within the scope of their own roles. Second, we will strengthen family partnerships. Professional school counselors will continue to engage families in academic and career planning, while also serving as a bridge to highlight the connection between learning, career readiness, and mental health. Meanwhile, our mental health therapists and student support specialists will expand parent workshops, resource sharing, and crisis supports, ensuring families feel informed, connected, and supported. Finally, we will deepen our use of data to drive continuous improvement. By analyzing referral patterns, service delivery data, and student outcomes, our team can identify gaps, monitor progress, and refine services to reach students more effectively. I want to close by thanking the board, and especially our Superintendent Dr. Mitchell, for your steadfast commitment to the well-being of our students and staff. Mental health is not separate from academic success. It is the foundation of it. By investing in this work, we're not only helping students heal and grow, but also preparing them for lifelong success. Together, we're building a stronger, more resilient future for every NNPS student. This concludes my presentation, and at this time, Ms. Askew, Ms. Evans, and I welcome any comments or questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any comments, questions, Board members? Ayman?
Yes, and this, I'd like to get a better understanding of, and I will admit I come at this from having done work in healthcare and had some healthcare clients. When do we refer out to outside providers? What do we do in-house? Do we do... Do we do things in-house that could be billed through Medicaid? Do we do that? I know, but prior to COVID, CSB had some group therapy that they were able to do in the schools, but then they weren't able to because they changed how, the state changed how they handled mental health for Medicaid purposes, how that was structured. So now I'm seeing the Community Services Board again, and then that National Counseling Group. So what do we refer out and when and how? And what are, how much intensive mental health care are we providing in the school division, you know, versus outside providers?
Sure. So probably a good data point to start with, and I'm going to refer back to this data slide right here. We do provide quite a bit of in-house, in-house support. So for example, for the referrals that we did receive from, whether it's teachers or student support teams referring for assistance for mental health therapy, we were able to maintain ninety-seven percent of the cases that were referred to us, we were able to provide services in-house. Three percent, we did refer out. Usually when that happens is because either the level of care that they need is extends beyond what we are able to provide here. Our partnership, you spoke about community-based providers, our partnership with the Hampton Newport News Community Services Board is particularly not focused on in-school supports, but is focused on outpatient services. So it's a complement to supports that may be provided. What I would say, and Ms. Askew invited you to jump in if I'm missing information, is that we will first and foremost address the issues here, and if we need more wraparound services, that is when we're reaching out to the partners for complimentary or additional services. That three percent that we spoke about is when we could not meet those services within the division.
And if families, they had coverage elsewhere, and they wanted to say thank you, but we want to get our own therapist or whatever, would you work with them to?
Oh, absolutely. So that's also part of our tier-two supports are referrals and working with families very closely. We offer a, we have, we maintain a community referral handbook, for lack of a better word, that looks not just a mental health referrals, but any kind of support that a family may need. Because often when they're coming to us because they need help in a particular area, there might be areas that we realize that they might need support, you know, whether it is through, you know, provision of childcare or questions related to housing. So we are able to do that warm handoff to providers that specialize in those areas. So that's part of what, part of that framework, that would be like a tier-two service.
Yeah, I, I would like to see some data in terms of how it impacts the school building. For example, regarding tier-three, let's say, discipline data. Perhaps have you considered using some of that to, to measure the effectiveness of the program?
I think that is, so that's a great thought. When we talked about what is it that we're really looking at doing some of our next steps is looking at our data systems and how they talk to one another. Because of the, especially for tier-three services or mental health referrals, all that data is structured in a separate way from where our student outcome data would be. So matching that up has been a challenge. But we're really, right now, looking and exploring to see how is it that we can more specifically tie to some of the outcomes that we want to see. For example, tracking very specifically to our attendance data, our discipline data, so we can link the level of service, not in an individualized way, but as an aggregate, to specific student outcomes. So that's one of our, that's not the next step slide. There it is, our data-driven improvements. But that's, that's really a great thought and really just in line with what we're hoping to do.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
So just piggybacking on what Ms. Alger brought up. So the data, the database that we have right now that covers student data and the one that covers mental health counseling, they're not integrated together. And I suppose what is the, have we looked at a project to integrate the two? So that such that you'd be able to have another column in this, in this, in our student data center to add these counseling sessions to tie to a particular student?
So we are exploring possible solutions. So we are looking very specifically at that. We in fact have a demo scheduled for later this week to look at. That does vary, addition to our student information system. Because of confidentiality reasons, our current student information system could not manage that level of information, which is the reason why it's kept separate. We need to be very mindful of that with the data. There are solutions that are starting to spark up because of interest. So we are starting to explore what, what might that look like for us.
So the, so the current company says that their, their database cannot accommodate the type of data that we, we gather from counseling. And, and they, so it's not a matter of we couldn't pay them more to expand their database. They're saying their, their database wasn't designed and can't accommodate.
So very specifically, our, our internal student information system synergy, the current system does not manage counseling data. They do have a, a different module that could be purchased for that purpose. So we are looking to see what that looks like.
Any other, Ms. Harris?
Hi, thank you for this presentation. I am always, it's very important to me in regards to access and people having the information. So how are we, how are we kind of getting this information out to our parents' engagement, folks that are wrapping themselves around these particulars that have these specific needs? And I have a two-part question. I know too, I'm Dr. Mitchell, we just went to, I went to my first New Horizons Board meeting and saw, we had a presentation from the Family Counseling Center out of William &amp; Mary, and they talked about wanting to uptick their, their numbers. How does that work? So if, if a referral goes out, and, and it, and I'm just in terms of process, if a referral goes out, do they come to the student, the Newport News student? Does Newport News student go to that? How does that?
For the, for the New Horizons William &amp; Mary Counseling Center, that is there.
That is the, okay, in, at that center.
And the way that we, we spread the information, for example, you know, we, first and foremost, we do it through our specialized student personnel, so our student support services staff on an annual basis. We make sure they are updated with everything that is available here. We just had a presentation from the Counseling Center that again is refreshing. Make sure that everybody is fully aware that that is an extra possibility for an add-on service, so that if they need to refer, they know exactly how to, how to do that.
Okay. Any other questions?
I just had a comment.
All right.
My comment is just in amazement over these numbers. Looking at almost forty-eight thousand individual sessions that you're doing for our students is unbelievable. And I, I know firsthand that many say they come to Newport News because of these services. And so I just want to, you know, thank you and your team for providing something that's worthwhile and, and meeting the needs of our students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I want to say thank you as well, and the numbers are a testament to the work that you do and the increase. So evidently the word is getting out, and, and it's good that when students and families and staff know that they need it, or that they know it's available and they're taking advantage of the service. So thank you as well. Thank you so very much.
And thank you for the opportunity to share. So it's another way in which we get the word out.
Yes, indeed.
Thank you again. At this time, we have our five-point-zero-two membership report, the ten-day count. Board members, you've received a copy of this report. Are there any questions?
Yes, Ms. Brown?
I'll just ask the, the one question in terms of, we, as we've watched this through the pandemic and over the last number of years, that the numbers are ticking down ever so slowly, but they're continuing to tick down maybe a few hundred students each year. And has the coordination happened? Because we do have a member of council in the audience, so just, there's a coordination happening in terms of looking at our demographics of our city and the number of citizens. So is it a number of citizens in the city and they're just not having as many children? Or is it, you know, another, is it another dynamic that would allow us to better predict and project over the next few years? Because we had some discussions just in our work session this, this evening about our capital plans and how, how we configure our schools and, and what, what populations. So I'm very interested in what population of students are we configuring our Division IV going forward, right? And what is, what is this actually, is this just a, a micro trend that is going to adjust itself away? Or is this more of a long-term type of a trend where we're seeing that we're going to continue to sort of just tick down over the next decade or so?
I, I will start out, and I looked at it, and Rob Coleman, and he was shaking his head yes, in terms of people are not having as many children. We also have a decline in the number of families that are transferred here for military services, which is also has an impact on our, our numbers. But I will say this, while the trend continues to go down, this year it has slowed a bit. So, you know, we're looking to see is that going to continue? But I would say, you know, just for the, for you, but as well as for the viewing public, that trend is not just us, it is across the area.
Across the whole, across the whole state.
Across the whole state.
Country.
Country.
Any other questions? All right. The construction point, five-point-zero-three, the construction report, five-point-zero-three. Board members, you have received a copy of this report. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we'll move to, on to item five-point-zero-four, comments by the superintendent, Dr. Mitchell.
Good evening again. Thank you, Madam Chair. We are excited to share highlights from the first few weeks of school. And we have two slides that show our students and our staff. They returned with a great amount of energy. And the opening days were certainly filled with enthusiasm, smiles, and a strong sense of community. These first few slides show the excitement as our schools open their doors to welcome back not only our students, but our families and our staff across the cities. We are excited to also share that Newport News Public Schools recently received recognition in the Bright Spots and Bold Solutions Section of the Department of Education All-in-Virginia Grant Progress Report for something that, as a matter of fact, Ms. Samra, who just presented, her department created what's called an attendance hub, and it gives staff tools and information for improving attendance. So we certainly appreciate the nod from the Virginia Department of Education, and they have reached out to ask if we would be willing to share our strategies with other divisions around the state, because we saw a significant decrease in chronic absenteeism last year. And I'm going to put you on the spot because I don't have the number in my head. Do you remember what the percent of decrease was?
I certainly do. It went from twenty-three percent probably absent in the previous year to eighteen percent.
So super excited about that. Lot of hard work, and we appreciate the partnership with the families that helped us to make it happen. Today is National IT Professional Day. Our professional technology staff, they support teaching and learning. They maintain our hardware, software, networks, student information system, and they ensure our network security as well. So special thanks to our technology team for all that they do to keep everything running smoothly, not only for our students, but for our staff as well.
And the board.
And the board, this is true. And the board, right, Devin? And the board. That's okay. Several board members, staff, and, and myself had a wonderful opportunity to join the Southeast Day Community Day Parade. This was a chance to connect with families, with partners, and community members, while also showcasing our students and our staff as part of this very longstanding tradition of pride and partnership in Newport News. And please mark your calendars, because this coming Saturday, September the twentieth, there will be the Denby Day Parade. So please make sure you turn out and show your support. And I see Dr. Gray smiling because he, he knows all about the Denby Day Parade. So please come out and support that, that parade. It's a lot of fun, lot of energy. Hopefully it won't be quite as hot. It was pretty hot last week. Right, right, Colin? National Hispanic Heritage Month is started yesterday, and it runs through October the fifteenth. The mid-September start date actually coincides with the Independence Day of several Central American countries. The month celebrates the cultural impact and history of Hispanic and Latino Americans in our country. And last but not least, we have a lot of things coming up. I did mention earlier about the Denby Day Parade, which is September twentieth. But we also have September thirtieth, it is high school back-to-school night, and you see the time from six to eight. Then on September twenty-fourth, we have middle school back-to-school night from six to eight. And then our preschool and elementary school back-to-school night is September the fifth from five to seven. I encourage all parents, all caregivers, all family members to please come out to our back-to-school night. And then October the tenth, schools are closed for students. It's a half-day for teachers for professional development in the morning and family conferences in the afternoon. I do also want to stress that there will also be parent conferences or family conferences held throughout the week. So if families are unable to make it that night, please contact with your, contact your school, and your school will make arrangements to work around a way to have the conference for you, even if you can't come back that night. Moving on, these events represent our ongoing commitment to our strong partnerships between our families, our staff, and the community. And together, we are ensuring that this school year has begun on a positive and very engaging note. Madam Chair, that concludes my comments and remarks for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. We'll now move on to item six, another, another opportunity to hear from the public. Are there any additional cards? Thank you. We'll move the, we'll move the agenda to matters by the school board, and we will begin with our school board student representative. Thank you.
Thank you. Recruitment for the Student Advisory Group on Education, also known as Sage, is underway and will be ending next week on September twenty-fourth. If any interested high school students are looking for an application, it can be found in their student support suite with their student support specialist. Last week, I had the privilege of meeting with Superintendent Dr. Mitchell to discuss potential projects for Sage, Sage students, and will continue to meet with her in the upcoming weeks to plan for the first Sage meeting. Lastly, I had the pleasure of participating in the Southeast Community Day Parade earlier this month, and I'm looking forward to joining the Mitchell-Marching Monarchs in this upcoming Denby Day Parade this weekend. Thank you all for coming out. We all value your time, and I hope you guys stay warm in this chilly, chilly weather.
Mr. Brown?
Okay. Well, I too, I'm looking forward to the Denby Day Parade. I'm going to go and get myself some Tootsie Rolls to go into, to go into my bag for the candy that I'll be throwing out. I've found out that the, the Tootsie Rolls, they really, they project well. So I've been, I've been practicing throwing.
And you taught me how to project.
I've been, I've been practicing my, my throw. So I always say to the young people, if you have not yet learned to catch, all right, just make sure, just at least cover your face, okay? Because I don't want your parents to look at me with the side eye, you know, because I hit you in the head with the candy, all right? So please just at least be prepared to cover your face, because the candy is, is coming. Because I'm going to get it, I'm going to get it out to you, so that way you're not in the street, all right? So very much looking forward to Saturday and seeing everyone at the Denby Day Parade. Looking forward to, it's a great start to the school year. I hope that all the fall, everyone participating in fall sports is having a great time and getting ready for their, their games, and it's going to have a lot of fun in their matchups. I hope to be able to attend at least one of the games, a few of the games this, this season. And so looking forward to seeing all of you participate in that. And hopefully you're having a great start to this first marking period, and you're enjoying your school year. So with that, that's, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Ms. Amyn?
We too have had a good start to the school year. I have now experienced middle school without middle school sports, and I'm now going to experience middle school with middle school sports. And it's, it's neat. It's, it's a wonderful layer on the middle school to see the, the kids wanting to try out and the teams. I'm really looking forward to seeing how this, this, this year plays out. So I plan to be at the Denby Day Parade. I will not be throwing candy. I'll be doing my best to walk and hand candy, because with my luck, I would throw it and hit somebody. So safer just to hand it out, but that is a, it's always a wonderful way.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Harris.
Yes, as many of my colleagues alluded to before, the Southeast Day Parade was an exceptional time. I missed the cars. I got there late. I missed antique cars, but I still walked, and I found Dr. Best. And we, and we, and we trucked it on foot. So no, but no, always an, an.
Um, so no, but no, always an, an amazing time, um, um, with the community. I, I did also too, a few weeks ago, had an opportunity to take a morning route on a school bus. Um, I was like undercover bust. And, um, it was a very interesting experience, um, from checking out the bus and all the engine and the lights and making sure all the things were where they needed to be, um, to the different stops and the dispatches coming in and out and back and forth and how you all, how bus drivers collaborated with one another and hey, can you grab this person from this stop? And it, it was amazing to see all the collaboration and how that piece went. Um, kiddos coming on the bus, falling asleep, spilling water on their, on the person next to them, a- all the things. Um, so it was extremely interesting. And then after that, I was able to speak with the Director of Transportation, just about processes and challenges and how those things are worked through. So that was very, very, um, insightful. Uh, my, my next project is to get on an afternoon route to, to see where we're all, where the magic really happens is what I'm told.
On a Friday. Do it on a Friday.
On a Friday. Um, so just wanted to let you all know, you know, we, we, we hear you. Um, we are trying to get into those crevices to really, um, um, figure out how to navigate this thing and, and do it in the right way. Um, I also want to remind people, my, my, uh, children, uh, not too heavy about this, but, um, eighth and tenth grade registration for PSAT is coming up. Um, I know some schools have already sent out their messages. Um, I have a Woodcider and a Ella Fitzgerald-er. So, um, just wanted to remind that, to tell your students, um, your, your kiddos. Um, it's important to kind of get that type of preparation in that platform, um, as they prepare for whatever their path may be. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter.
Oh, thank you, um, Madam Chair. Um, I typically don't say a whole lot, but I do have something to say today. And, um, so we have been listening to folks for a couple of years about the LGBT, um, and, and their concerns. And I heard this week has been troubling for all of us, no matter what side of the table you sit on. Well, one thing I did hear, because we forgot about the school shooting, we heard about the college shooting, but we forgot about the school shooting. And, um, all, both of these are correlated. And what you come back and say is, if you see something, say something. So even the person who did the apparent assassination of the person on the college campus, apparently he had been talking to his family members who turned him in. Say something, okay? So when we come to this LGBT, I'm gonna tell you, I'm a school board member, I'm with you, okay? I'm gonna say something. I'm gonna say something. So I'm with you. I'm one hundred percent with you. We as board members, our main job is to ensure that every student, every student gets a safe and best education they can here. I don't care your color, your creed, your demographic, you know, what your religion is. You know, if you're Democrat, Republican, Independent, we here take an oath as a school board member to ensure that each and every child, student here is safe in their, here in an environment that's safe. So I don't want someone to come back and say, hey, we had school board members up here and not one of you stood up and said that we were with you, no matter a vote, or doesn't, sometimes it doesn't take a vote. Sometimes it just takes a voice. And so I just wanna let you know, this voice here, this voice here, we hear you, super clear, loud and clear. And if you do see something, say something. If you see someone that's being harmed or being bullied, see something, say something. You hear someone talking negative about someone, see something, say something. This, uh, you know, this, this has been a, a troubling time for me, you know? I work at a university, after that shooting, we were on lockdown as well. So it's just not a one-way, you know, one side or another. We're in a, uh, we're in a space that we've never seen ourselves here in America. And so I wanna make sure that great things are happening here at Newport News Public Schools. And so I'm gonna tell you, if you see something, say something. If one of the students out here that feel uncomfortable, reach out to me. Reach out to me, because we need to know. I don't just need to hear from, you know, come here and tell us, but I've heard it. I just wanna let you know today, I heard it and I can tell you, many of my school board members, if not all of us are sitting up here, do hear you. And you know what? It took someone today to says, you know, we haven't heard from you. We hear you, but no one has spoken out. You've spoken out, at least I heard you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Ms. Searls Law?
Well, thank you. Um, back to Douglas and throwing can, wanting, um, Tootsie Rolls, I thought you wanted them to eat. Um, this school year is gonna be a challenge because we're gonna have to struggle to stay focused on the main thing as being the main thing. We've already started the beginning of this school year with so much that we've had to navigate as a community, as a country. Um, and for us and our educators to be able to stay focused on making sure that we do think of each student and get them educated and allow them to be children and not deal with what we're having to deal with. It's going to be huge, so our work is really cut out for us. Um, uh, Mr. Hunter, I do appreciate your words. I think they are very indicative of many of us on this board. So thank you for your voice tonight.
Ms. Alger? Thank you, I'm sorry.
All right. Um, I'm gonna start with something light. Today we had a trolley tour and, um, both Council, um, Councilwoman Vic and Councilman Ely uh, invited both Dr. Best and myself, um, to ride on a trolley with them around, uh, the South District. And what we did was we helped, uh, the folks who attended the tour to make connections. Make connections throughout parts of the city and make connections with the importance of our schools being as hubs. And so it was a great, uh, great opportunity. It was different than a forum. Um, it included questions, uh, people had, um, you know, opinions, shared opportunities. And all we did was take it in, uh, and, and of course, uh, had discussions. So I wanna give a big shout out, uh, to our, our council counterparts, um, for, for what they did today. Um, I am Latina and not many people know it. Uh, they see me, they can't figure out who I am. But my parents were immigrants, uh, and I can tell you that I was the first one born in this country. Uh, and we worked hard. Uh, we worked very hard because we always have to figure out how to prove ourselves. Uh, and truly, I, you know, being the first one to graduate from high school, imagine that, uh, college and all these things. Um, to, to celebrate Hispanic heritage means so much more than just those words. Uh, it's a celebration of resilience and what our families are going through even today. So please recognize that. Um, Gary, thank you so much. Uh, this is why we're, we're, we're close souls. Because, uh, Gary speaks the truth and I wanna thank you for, uh, standing up for the LGBTQ community. Uh, I, I feel the same exact way. Um, I have stood up, um, since the moment my child was born. And, uh, and I, um, you know, my thing is, uh, I'm with you. So thank you all and, uh, and, and oh, last thing. These folks right here, we are working hard behind the scenes, I can promise you that. Uh, we, um, do so much. And Dr. Mitchell, we are constantly meeting and figuring out what is it that we can possibly do to make things better and to keep things the main thing and to remove those distractions so that our children can learn, right? And so that our children can be accepted. So I wanted you to know that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alger. So I don't know where to start, I'm trying not to go over so much what they've already covered. But, um, it was a, a pleasure participating in Southeast Community Day, um, Parade and I'd like to thank all of the administrators, teachers, students, and all staffers that took time out of their busy day for that Saturday so soon after school had just opened to come out and to celebrate. So that was a wonderful, um, occasion. So thank you for that. Um, also I would like to thank the Newport News Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority for putting over six hundred books into the hands of Newport News Public School students. And they gave us these pins that, uh, to wear tonight that says Reading Matter. And as you all know, we have initiative across the division. So thank you to the Newport News Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, um, the Newport News Alumni Chapter. Thank you so very much. Um, the mayor also kicked off his book club, so we have reading coming from all directions. And then I also like to extend a congratulations to the mayor and Mrs. Jones for the birth of their, um, son, for their son. Let's see, the tour was fantastic. We did get to connect about schools and communities and, and how we, um, work together and the needs and the importance and how one affects the other. So that was great. Again, um, thank you to Councilman Ely and, uh, Councilwoman Vic and to all of the community, uh, people that came out. And just keep your eyes and ears open because, um, Councilman, um, Ely said, we're gonna do that at least every quarter. So if you have an opportunity to, uh, take part in that, do that, um, as well. And so speaking of the bus drivers, I shared this story with Dr. Mitchell. So I'm responsible sometimes for two of my great nieces and I kept one overnight, so I had to get her to the bus stop to get to school. And so running behind and with my luck, I got behind not only one bus, but two buses. So when I got to her bus stop, the bus had pulled up to the corner, had stopped, he had closed the door. So one part of me, the human part, was saying, I'm right here, he's right there, he's gonna open the door and let me on. But he did not, cause now the school board member and the former employee came back to me. He cannot. After they closed that door, they have certain procedures and, and regulations and, and things that they have to do for the safety of the students on the bus, for their safety and for the safety of all of those around them. So he didn't let me on the bus. So I had to take my great niece to her school, which happened to be Carver Elementary School. And actually I had really kind of forgot about it. But as I walked her across the crossway, he was coming through the circle on his bus and he opened the window and he just started apologizing. And I said, sir, you don't have to apologize to me. You are simply doing your job. I wanna thank you for doing your job and you don't have to apologize. And, and I'm saying, did somebody tell him I was on the school board? I hope he wasn't, but I, I really don't think that's what it was. I think he was just a nice person who was trying to do his job. So I wanna say thank you, I didn't get his name, to the driver. His bus said one thirty-five at Carver Elementary School. So if, if anybody, please let him know, I appreciate him and I'm not gonna be late, um, anymore. So we, we thank you bus drivers. And I'm gonna piggyback on Mr. Hunter. So, sometimes it does take one person. Um, we have been discussing the transgender issue since the time the, uh, procedures were put in place. It's, it's, we've been back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. But sometimes, like Ms. Searls Law said, you have to keep the main thing the main thing. And there's something about Newport News, when you say Newport News, it attracts clicks, it attack, it attracts listeners. If the news leads with a headline, if they say Newport News as opposed to pretty much any other district, they know they're gonna get some extra traffic. So trying to keep the main thing the main thing, I think that kept us from keeping the main thing the main thing. So if you need me to explain that more, I'll be more than happy to, but I too stand with, uh, Mr. Hunter. So I want the record to reflect that as well. So that's all I have to say. And at this time, I move, uh, that we have a motion to go into closed session.
I move, um, the school board convene a closed session meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven, uh, point A one of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. The subject of this portion, no one told me that you couldn't hear me. Of the session is to discuss our consideration of pers- prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, and appointees regarding the discussion of specific employees.
Second?
Second, we have a second.
Okay, so we moved to second that we go into a closed session?
Who was second, Ms. Harris? Oh, Ms. Amon. Okay.
Any questions, discussion?
No discussion.
Ms. Buffalo? Ms. Fall as well? Amon?
Four.
Brown?
Four.
Harris?
Four.
Hunter?
Four.
Searls Law?
Four.
Alger?
Four.
Best?
Four.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.